We can start a couple of minutes early.
Right, okay.
Let's go for it. Call this work session to order and I will turn it over to Matt.
All right, hi again, everybody. We've made it to the last meeting. What I would offer to you guys there, we attached some of these things just today, so I also wanted to provide a hard copy to you with the memo that Dwayne graciously put together for us, kind of detailing some of the improvements over the years to the City High Fine Arts facility. Also put in, gave you a hard copy of the proposed FMP 2.2. Remember, we haven't voted on this because it suggested some changes about taking out elementary school projects, the field houses and then an auditorium project are in here, but hasn't been approved by you guys to date. There was some questions from the board about the City High Fine Arts project in particular and just maybe the status and condition and how it compared to other projects in the district. I think that's a fair assessment of why it got agended for this evening. The one thing I think you'll probably hear me reiterate, or I'll just kind of, to use Adam's phrase, bury the lead from the top, is that I think advising the board on this, I would just suggest be careful about cherry picking certain projects, right? That we've been really good about doing comprehensive studies when we have to align how we're going to commit our resources and our funds. That's where some of the field house recent stuff came from, because we're in the middle of those athletic studies or follow up to those athletic facility studies we've done in the past. And so if there's momentum, wherever this conversation lands tonight around this, that would be probably my first recommendation, that if we wanted to talk fine arts, then that there would be a potential need to conduct a facility study to just get a lay of the land on those different campuses. Of course, we could make some assumptions about that. We know Liberty High School, right, is a very new build, beautiful new campus, some beautiful facilities, but I think you'd want to take a critical look just at your landscape of those fine arts facilities, really on all of your secondary campuses, so you knew and then had a, could long term plan the budget for if we do upgrades here, then what would we need to account for for upgrades in the next five years, 10 years down the road? And so, kind of with that background, you know, I would turn it over to you guys for conversation. We obviously have Jeff and Dwayne here again with us tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Oh, and I know the final thing I was going to say, we did get some collaboration from the City High team about some of the questions that their instructors were maybe bringing and asking about, and so we're working, I'm not ready to distribute this document to you, I think we need to probably clean up some of that Q and A from where they'd ask questions and things. We think we could even take some more actionable steps on with our current budget about some of the requests. And so there are some quick fix things that we think we could do based on that feedback, but other things, of course, that would require long term planning for, so.
Matt, how long do you think for those questions that you have before you could share?
I think in the next week, we could have that turned around.
I would just add, to respond to the looking more holistically, I think we just had a great update from our middle schools, and one of them talked about the giant influx of kids in music programs. I think as, if we're going to look at fine arts, I agree, we need to be looking at all of it, because I know there's a lot of work that went into the middle schools to accommodate that, but we should probably evaluate, was it enough? Did we, were we there, right? Did we have enough to handle a much bigger number maybe than people were expecting? And to look at it pretty holistically there. I do think it's not unreasonable to expect that a school that is, you know, decades older than others is going to have certain limitations, and we should make sure that it's not negatively impacting our students' experiences to the best of our abilities, right? Like, I know there's going to be a difference, something that's seven years old versus, you know, 50. So, coming up with the, you know, a fuller plan as to how we're going to make sure that the equity there is important.
I want to join with Sean in expressing this similar thing. Well, I heard really from the unauthorized visit to City High.
I was authorized.
Well, you have privileges, I'm sure. So, plus that, the faculty there were just concerned about the number of students that are coming, that are going to be coming in, in one fine arts space and accomplishing. And also, you know, they went to most of the, a lot of spaces, that City High that are for fine arts program, and they could use some improvement, just looking at, I don't know, sending you walls or anything, but certainly looking at, looking at what students see when they, when they're participating in the fine arts at that building, the other buildings, and trying to make sure the students are seeing about the same kind of structure, like infrastructure.
Jump on that, Charlie, is, and I like where you're going there, because what they see is what they feel. And if I'm a fine arts student, and, yeah, I was kind of everything, but if I'm a fine arts student and I walk in and I see something that wasn't made ADA compatible especially, like the costume room, and I know that this is, nobody here was part of the thousand building in 2013, right? So, none of the board members, yeah, different superintendent that would have approved it, different people at City High approving it, and so I'm not passing any fault on anybody here, but if you walk through there and you're like, what? And they didn't even put a drinking fountain in across from the band room. My dad, I was talking to my dad, two of us, and he was a high school, he was a high school athlete, and he was not a fine arts kid whatsoever, but he, he was something that's like, they're blowing horns the entire time. There's, there's no drinking fountain for, I mean, it's, it's those kind of things that when I look through and I walk through, I'm just like, if I was a student, and I'm a fine arts student, how do I feel about what I see? And then I walk over to the athletic facilities, and I'm not an athletic student, because I'm a fine arts kid, and I see what we built over there, and it's not difficult for a kid, and a parent for that matter, a guardian, to see the difference. And that's kind of what, what I kind of got out of it, is just the value that everyone feels as a student.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't let the older building limit ourselves when it comes to the athletics of City High. Brand new light room, all of the facilities that they absolutely need. And I'm not trying to pit arts against athletics, but I am talking about curricular and co-curricular versus extracurricular, and where our priorities should be. I think we also, you know, in terms of cherry picking, I think with the amount of funds that we have left remaining to us in the FMP, we really have to be strategic in how we are using those funds to increase enrollment and general fund dollars. We have an opportunity here on the east side to elevate our music experience. On the east side, that we just had, you know, an hour's worth of heated comments about the troubles of that theater system, to elevate it to parity with the other high schools in our district, and also to, to put it at the same quality and caliber of the current instruction that is going on there. And, you know, I, I view it as an opportunity for us to have a destination fine arts school. I mean, we already, the hard part about having something like that is the personnel. We already have the personnel. We have outstanding personnel in our fine arts that have taken the jazz band to the state champion, to be the state champion, the win ensemble, they have four A bandmaster award winners, the choir performed at the Iowa School Board Convention last year, and the Choral Directors Association last year, numerous all state and first chair all state musicians at that school, and as we heard tonight, we have an enormous amount of students in sixth grade who will soon be in City High. We have Regina right next door to these neighborhoods, and, you know, when, when our parents are looking at southeast, going from their small elementaries and possibly choosing Regina, what's going to attract them to stay in our City High heater system or come back after junior high? Are they, is it going to be athletics? Regina has the athletics, but the fine arts, that is something that is going to attract students. This, you know, this is about how we bolster and support our east side at a time than when we are talking about closing their, their elementaries. So, you know, in terms of cherry picking, I'll pick that cherry, that's a really low hanging fruit for me. And, yeah, I, please, you know, whatever we can do in the short term would be, would be awesome. They need more space, they need more storage, but I really think we need to be looking at some long term improvements, because it only boos us to, to, to add on to what these instructors are doing with our students currently. It, it would, I, I, the, the result we're going to get is going to pay us back in the days.
I don't think anyone's making a value judgment about the need or the want to do facility project for fine arts at City High. I think my question is, so then what happens the week after you approve it and the West High instructors show up and talk to you about the needs that they have? Because there are significant needs at West High that I'm sure they will articulate to in the growth of their programs and the success of their programs. That's what I'm trying to caution us against as a district, is that we need to think about, you have some advocates that came to you now about a particular project, and when you commit and approve funds to that project, you will then also have another group that will come to you. So, my suggestion is you look at that strategically and say, what do we need in all parts of the district, and that we build a plan to address that. This may very well be the needed, the most needed and the first addressed project. That's why I'm saying, I just think it's, it's a little bit dangerous precedent to step in and just commit funds to a project without a plan or without a, an overview or a survey of the current existing facilities.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and make the analysis. If our one parent, of, of, of Liberty, say that she thinks we need to do something there with one particular one, and I'm more than willing to look at those things, and West too. If West needs, you know, we can do things based on the experience of students at West, that's fine, we're willing to try it.
I mean, are they getting improvements as we speak right now at West? I mean, I think they have the largest band room in the district.
It's quite a theater, that auditorium, that probably is the part of fine arts at West High, and at this point is, needs some things. And so I, I do have to look at, oh, I haven't heard anything about Liberty yet, sorry, I crossed them off, but, no, I mean, I'm sure there's things that, yeah, that Liberty needs as well. So, I, I, I don't know if it's cherry picking, or I guess I think it's just trying to look equitably in at everybody, because I know, I mean, I know people have been talking about the West High auditorium for a long time, things that they need, storage, the curtains and other things that they want, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's older, yeah, definitely, but West High can get their entire band on the stage, and, and City High cannot.
Right.
Right, so their needs are different, but I don't, but I don't think that means we ignore West High's needs.
No, right.
I think I have to look at all of them, and I think we'll find, City High probably is going to need more, I don't know.
I mean, I guess you could make the same argument about the auditorium, what happens when we build that auditorium and City decides that, you know, we need to do a whole two, you know, so.
And that's also what I want to talk about too, is thinking strategically about, I mean, so much of, one of the things that I've learned is so much of my course on the school board was created 10 years ago and how we built out the master plan, right? That's kind of where we're sitting at, because we thought we were going to have all this enrollment. Like, this 2.0 started with five elementary schools that were going to be built out, in addition to Longfellow, in addition to Panout, right? It's no longer on here, but you can go back, I wouldn't look through it, but I mean, it's, that's what people approved and what they were expecting. So now we have this money that we've drawn back in, right? And how we spend that now will affect whoever's sitting at this table in 2029, if they want, let's say all of a sudden enrollment rebounds, we need two or three buildings. I'm throwing pie in the sky, or even one, and we need that money, and we need to go and ask the community for PEPAL, for another PEPAL vote. How we spend this money will determine how those people will vote in the future, because they've left us a big pot of what were supposed to be elementary schools, and then, oh, I forgot the addition at Liberty, that we may need to come back and ask them for someday. So I don't even, hey, I see 30, what is that, 30? What, what's the amount left over right now? 37.29 million, right? Almost 38 million, almost 40. Like, should we have that more? Because I don't know if we go and, we're talking about closing schools, we're talking about pairing them up, how we go into the community in 2029 and say, oh, we closed this school or paired up these schools, but we need to build a school here because all of a sudden there's 500 kids trying to get into, to build it. You know what I'm saying? Like, one of those new neighborhoods, especially the ones that, when I look and I see right across from, look at the high school, they're building those houses up like, I don't know, they're building them, but you know what I'm saying? And, and that's kind of where I'm thinking when I look at this, and I'm looking at some of these expenditures, like the auditorium, like where, that's $17 million, that's almost what we committed to what the previous board committed to building an elementary school. And it's what we spent on our additions in middle school. And that's my big fear of how we spend is what money is left over for whoever's sitting at this table 10 years from now.
But Director Lingo, I think that's a good point. And like, my, and so apologies for the choice of words if that offended, you know, somebody on the, on the cherry picking example, I'll quit saying that, but I, I think that the point was, is where you're going, right? You have some uncommitted funds, right, that we can use. And so, to do that strategically, then I think you just want a strategic plan of how to do that, right? This very well, again, maybe the first and most needed project you'd identify, but I think if you're not willing to commit the funds to things like the field houses or the auditorium that haven't yet been approved, then again, an assessment of saying, okay, where our fine arts facilities are at would seem like a logical next step to say, let's assess where those are at, how many funds do we need to actually make all of those improvements, and then how do we order those improvements? And that will, is what will protect you against, you know, some of those concerns coming to you from other advocates that were not being taken care of. One of the beautiful things in the first facility master plan, I always thought, is how it touched all the regions of the community at some point as it was built, right? And so I always think that's where we have to be thinking about is, okay, what is going to be, it might be different, their needs could be very different depending on the region they're in. And so again, no value judgment about the City High fine arts or what their needs are, I just think you want to look at it long term to say, to Mitch's point about, okay, we may have some funds here we could use, are we solid on the plan that we want to use those funds, or how do we build some more things into that long term plan?
Matt, can I add on just one? I would say too, I would be cautious about establishing a perceived playbook for staff to get what they want. You know, if they think, okay, we called some board members in, we got them motivated and rallied, we had some extra money, they're going to do that. That, that will, that word will go out to staff, and that will become an avenue that they pursue. And it will, I mean, it won't be just West Music, it's going to be your elementary schools who have legitimate needs, and so just be cautious about that. I mean, our staff are savvy, they know, you know, how to, be cautious.
And I mean, I agree that Molly, I, I want us to be strategic with what money we do have left over. Having had a child start the fine arts program at City and volunteering and being in there, I know what they are lacking, and having been over to West and visiting with them, walking through their facilities, hearing from their teachers, they have a view of what they're lacking, and starting to get emails from Liberty parents, I'm like, where are you coming from? But no, that they're, yes, we're only, what, five years old, seven years old, but you all didn't do this for the fine arts group. I, I think we need to look at if we're going to go down this path, the facilities, to ensure that we are addressing or making a plan to address the most needed throughout the entire sort of spectrum for our buildings.
Yeah, you led with Matt, that, you know, that there's things in there that we have yet to approve. I guess I would add, you know, what was the timeline we were working on to approve whatever changes we were making to 2 to 2.2 or whatever number scheme we're calling it, in order to have a timeline to evaluate other things we might want to get in there, right? We, we have extra money on that sheet that is not approved, so the number itself is fuzzy, right? I mean, I think we need to have some sort of timeline to get a more finalized approved version, even if we, we know we'll change it later, because different things come up, right, that happens, but we can't keep marching along time wise with partially approved, not approved, other things that we're talking about, like, so I'm kind of curious what our.
That's a great, I, I do think that's a great question, Sean. A couple of these, you know, we're waiting to firm up some of the numbers on the field houses, the completion of, you know, trying to do that study or what those would cost us. That's why we've been okay with the space as well, because I don't think we feel a lot of urgency around that, because we don't have exact figures. The one I would tell you, I just, I, I think I feel more urgency from, from a relationship perspective with one of our major municipalities, would be the city of Corleville, that if we're going to back away from that project, they probably need to know so they can adjust their planning. And so if we're looking at that as an extra pool of resources to go to, and they're counting on us for 17, 18 million potentially, even though you haven't voted on it yet, we did enter into the contract on the design work and have given them some rough numbers, I do think we owe it to them sooner rather than later to say we're, even if you can give us the message of, hey, can you tell the city that you're revisiting what that might be, or that we're unsure about our commitment at this time? Because they're engaged in community planning with their municipal, as a municipal entity, and so we need to give them that information, but we don't have specifics on that commitment yet, and, or an ask from them specifically, other than, again, in general, that 17, 18 million dollar range. But if we are going to be good partners, we at least need to communicate back to them if we're thinking about that project differently. So from a timeline perspective, there's some space there, but I think now would be the time before we get too, too much further down the road with either of those. Chase, anything you'd add?
That's where I was going to go as well. My understanding from Sherry Proud at the city of Corleville and being on that core team early on was, they anticipated going to their board this summer to get approval for moving on forward, and then their August meeting, I think their board threw them a bit of a curve ball and approved just their overall conceptual plan for their master plan for that entire park, not, not the auditorium, which I think caught Sherry and Kelly a little bit off guard, because they thought they were further down the road than that. So originally, we thought that they were going to come to us even before school started and said, we got our approval for the board, here's the design you need to take. And so, to Matt's point, yes, time is, is probably of the essence for us to get back to the city of Corleville for their, their city planning, but also, it's probably going to influence what their city council does in terms of decisions they make around that, and that's not for us to own, but I think it's just, I think they're going to be impressed that we're still in a partnership on this, and so they'd probably like to know that sooner rather than later.
So when do we vote on that or discuss it, or do we make another meeting for that, Chase?
Well, I mean, we've, we've been, because this is a city of Corleville project, we've been letting them take the lead and take those first steps on those meetings, but kind of based on the conversations we're having, that was under one set of assumptions of where, of how we were progressing. But to Matt's point, if we think we're going to do something different, we can take that step without waiting for any additional information from the city of Corleville on that, Mitch, and so I would just defer to the exec, and Matt about when they would want a calendar, a meeting for that.
Is there an option to move forward, but at a lower dollar amount commitment than what we have been discussing? Because I, I mean, I do think that that dollar amount seems more than I thought we would be talking about.
Sure, I mean, if we want to set a different, sorry, I cut.
No, I was going to say that, I, I think, I was just going to give perspective on the timeline. Last time we met and talked about the FMP, I mean, basically it was consensus on the concepts, right? We had consensus on the concepts of field house and auditorium. So of course, we didn't go back and communicate anything different to Corleville, other than we're continuing to go, and this is the line item we have in our plan. And so if that's even the starting point, you know, Jane, I mean, I think we could definitely do that and tell them, hey, we don't have 17 anymore, we have 10, or whatever that number might be. I just think, again, sooner, you know, rather than later for them, we haven't taken a vote on that. Tonight's conversation was really around City High Fine Arts. We may want to come back another time and say, do we want to take out those field houses? Do you want to take out the auditorium and wait on the completion of a fine arts facility? But you're going to have to answer Corleville in some way, right? So, talking myself in circles a little bit.
The next, for me, to feel comfortable, I think work sessions are great, but I'm all about, if we're going to make changes to our FMP or change courses, we need to be at the board table. And I don't know if we can do this at the first meeting in October, but I think we need to have the conversation, because I hear from people that they don't, for whatever reason, they like the video with the voices versus just listening to the audio, and I think we need to be as transparent as possible. This is transparent, it's on tape, but for whatever reason, people listen more and more up there, and, and they need to hear what we're thinking and our rationale. If we're, it, it may be a surprise to Corleville, but we have to consider our budget, and they're working on theirs, so that would be my suggestion.
I would say it is hard, having tried to listen to a work session, you don't catch everything everybody's saying, so it is difficult. I was going to offer up not doing our climate action for ops at the next meeting and have a work session ahead of time, because doing it at nine o'clock is not, right?
Right, that's why you put that on tape.
Yeah, I was just saying, we could talk through some ideas of directions, because I, I don't know that we can at a work session, this one or a future one, sit there and say, we're pulling away from an auditorium. I don't want to pull away from it. I'm not willing to say that, right? So, I don't think we can now decide that we're changing course without having a more official conversation, whether it comes down to a vote or at the board table, we're providing some sort of direction. I think at some point, something's got to give, and we're going to have to vote on something, and that's got to happen at the table. I don't know if we could have a preliminary conversation at a work session when we're all a little fresher or not, if that's even worth it. So I was just going to offer up the time of the ops at the next meeting.
It is. I mean, another piece that I think was a bedrock of the success of FMP 1.0, and then as we got 2.0 off the ground, was the amount of community engagement we did around the plans. And Mitch is definitely right about how circumstances have changed for a number of factors since 2.0 was, was put down on paper, but part of that was a commitment to committing the promises and some of the things we had promised the committee first, do that first round and then do that second round. At nine, at nine o'clock at night, Dwayne can give some history, because I think it is important about how projects got emplaced in the plans where they did. But if, if we are really talking about not just moving some projects or understanding that enrollment is, is not where it's supposed to be, so we're going to take off a school, but really trying to change the focus, I think there would need, I think it would behoove us to do some additional community engagement around this too. And so, President Paul, and I, when you say you have the discussion, you know, I wouldn't want to surprise anybody sitting there and say, okay, what is the outcome of that, of that discussion, right? Because I just think that's one of the things that really garnered us so much support, is we sprinkle projects across the district, helping engage a variety of communities in what they thought their needs were, best, best places around. Now I'm talking myself in circles, but I think part of the reason I want to say that is what happens. Well, it goes back to, it goes back to Jane's question and Matt's point about, yes, time becomes of the essence, because when we talk about these major facility master plans, there are a number of steps that go into it that really do kind of take time for us just to set up and then, and then get that feedback that we need as we develop this work going forward.
I mean, I feel like relatively soon, you probably do need to take a vote on if the auditorium project is staying in there, or if it's staying at their less amount, or if it's being pulled out, right? I mean, that's probably what's fair to the city of Corleville to know. The field houses, we can leave as a longer term question mark, right? That only affects- That only affects our entity. And so if that's a, you know, even if you'd approve the rest of it sans the natatorium, I mean, the field houses, you could change at any point, right? You could go back and say, actually, we got a facility study on our fine arts. We want to pull the field houses out and put this these fine arts improvements in. That's all within the system. The one that's urgent, again, is Corville. And so I feel like if we put on an agenda, there probably needs to be a vote on there with something about, is it being left in at a reduced rate? Is it being pulled out? Or are we approving it as is? But you won't, the, because the unfortunate part is you just won't get the results of what I'm suggesting you do about the, you know, survey of really our fine arts facilities in enough time to be able to be responsive to Corville.
What we probably won't be able to produce between now and if that is on the 8 is concepts of what if we said, to give you any options, right? To Matt's point, if it was going to be a reduced rate, I'm not sure that architects would be able to show us, okay, what would it look like if the district only committed $10 million or $5 million? That would be, that would, if that's a, if that's a concern for the board of what that would look like, I don't know if we'd be able to get that lined up in the next three weeks about if we reduce our contribution, what does that do to the do to the facility?
So I was just going to listen to them. And I'm not going to do history, but a couple reminders. One, this is 13 years in process. It's been a long road, believe me. I had no hair left. But the contingency issue of 37 million was put there. We were coming out of COVID. We had supply chain issues. We have subcontractor manpower issues in other cities horrendous. And we felt like it was a prudent thing to do was to make sure we could cover our costs. That's why that contingency is there and for no other reason, okay? There were, and I don't mean to correct anybody, but there were three elementary school projects and two additional elementary school sites, which made the five, but only three buildings were in the plan. At West High School, we are currently renovating the choir and orchestra areas. That's part of the current project. You may recall, and I think Jane, we're on the board even, maybe not. Instructors from West High School came to board me and were concerned that they weren't getting their fair share, okay? And so we went back and we looked at it and we made some corrections. We made some additions to the budget.
And Dwayne, with that said, there's things that they put in that list that we can do quickly, too, right? That's the Q and A thing that we'll distribute to. There's things we've identified in a similar fashion that we could do. Obviously, a full new auditorium is not one of those, right? But some of the the concerns they have, I'd want you to know, we feel like we can address those quickly.
And one of the issues, and the other comment I want to make is that both West High School and City High School were previous to the facility master plan. 2008, 2012, okay? I mean, that's when those two projects were done. I came in 2012. But I got to tell you, every one of our buildings is handicapped accessible. There might be one or two rooms that are not. The code doesn't require it. We have to, we have to be able to get students to every level of the building, which we do. At the Fine Arts, I don't know if you're talking about that third floor senior costume room. But there is another way to get to that is via elevator to the third floor, you know, that's great. So I don't know if that's what you're talking about, Charlie, I'll talk later. But anyway, so those are there. The Fine Arts projects that we've done since I've been here, Liberty High of course, we upgraded Northwest three years ago. We're just finishing Southeast. And we're looking at back and forth, you know, who gets what when, the age of the construction. City High was built in 39. Here, I'm getting the history, but that, you know, that auditorium was restrained by four bearing walls. So without a major tear down and rebuild, you're not going to change the auditorium at City. You just not, unless you actually want to tear it down. It's a physical, structural fact, believe me.
I'm not suggesting that we made an all new auditorium. I guess what I'm talking about is making some changes to make up for that.
And even the stage at City High was added on to back in 1997. Believe me, I went through every every physical plan today in the plan room, reacquainted myself with everything that's happened in those buildings, which I'm not going to bore you with. But it was improved, okay? Those, a couple of the notes, all the projects are approved by you guys when we bring to the board. Even even when we bring the design proposal, that's a time to say, no, we don't want to, we don't want to delay or put it off. But you had those opportunities. I mean, it's, this is a roadmap that we used in 1.0. It was a pretty successful roadmap.
I miss half, but okay.
And 2.0 has been so affected by all the other things outside in the contractor community, it's made it a lot more difficult. The drinking fountain, I love that one. I went back and looked. Why wasn't there a drinking fountain on the first floor? Simple answer, the restroom's on the second floor and you needed training and a water line to put in a drinking fountain. And typically, all the drinking fountains are recessed into the wall so you don't restrict ADA to down the corridors. On the lower level, they wanted a larger equipment storage room, which they're now saying is too small, and an office and a practice room. And there was no room for restroom one and two. There's no plumbing and water lines to that area right now. Not that we can't put in some pumps and do some things. It's it's a billable thing. But that, to my best guess and the reading of the plans, is why it wasn't put in. Simple reason, I wasn't involved in that, but that's what happened. The same architects did City High, they did West High. But why are the rooms different? You know, why are, why is the van so big? And I'm talking about the Fine Arts additions. You know, there's, I don't think there was enough management of the process at West High. I'm trying to be diplomatic. They run kind of a muck over there in Liberty Design. They did.
Dwayne, I'm going to jump in here. We're kind of into the details and I think we were, we were talking about trying to get back to the, and I think we could spend some more time on that. I think if you guys are comfortable, something needs to go on the October 8th agenda. And I'll work with Ruthina and Molly about how that looks. And, you know, I don't want to force you in a uncomfortable spot about having to take a vote, you know, right away on that. And so, you know, there's maybe maybe an opportunity, we could do one more discussion about it and try to articulate those options. But I would, I would certainly think by the end of October, we need some kind of a vote up or down about the natatorium. Chase and I can now, you know, I think we can fairly confidently say at least it's questionable, right, to the city of Corville. To let them know this will be a a topic for the board in October. And then we can proceed that way, right? And so I think we can start with kind of FMP 2.2 being the agenda item for October 8th. And then we'll keep it as discussion for that one. And maybe, I'm just talking this out loud because it sounds like, okay, maybe we're thinking of a plan here. And then the second meeting will come back as an actual action item about what we would do with it. And are you okay if we proceed with the facility study on fine arts? Is there any reason not to do that until further conversation?
I I I think we want to do that.
Okay. We won't wait on a vote from you for that, then we'll just go ahead and get moving on that, so.
Hills, Hills, North Liberty, North Corville, South West High, Elementary, and East. What do you want?
Any other discussion items?
I would, we're just talking about, just think through if there's other data you're going to want to see or something you would want to see with that.
I would like to hear community input. That would be a big thing for me. Does does Iowa City Schools, the school district as a whole, believe in athletic field houses? Does the school district as a whole believe in a natatorium at Corville? Does the school district as a whole believe in Fine Arts?
Okay. So Director Lingo, the thing I would say is if we want to, if we want to have a community engagement process, a further community engagement process, and we need to design one. The, I do believe those decisions for the field houses and the natatorium project were informed on the feedback in the creation of FMP 2.0. So those things, including the natatorium, were part of the build out of Liberty High School. And that Liberty High School is going to have its own competitive teams. That's how that decision arrived there. And so that I do think was informed from community input. The field houses, you could probably maybe articulate a different argument, but I still feel like that was also a piece of addressing athletics in FMP 2.0. And that was heard from the feedback about the design, so.
Can you give me the feedback? I'd appreciate it. I'm I'm not trying to be thematic.
Well, it's on the website about the compelling themes and how we built the plan, right? I mean, so those things are there. I think we've communicated those to the community. I'm not sure if we'd still have the raw data from those sessions, but we did multiple Zoom sessions throughout that time because we weren't gathering in person to collect that feedback. But the themes about how we built that were there, right? That was part of the effort for middle schools. That was a lot of the steps we've taken here. That's what it was informed on. So if you want to commission another community engagement process, then again, I think that's the conversation to have, not just an evaluation of field houses and natatorium. I'm really trying not to be difficult. I'm just trying to think about where are you guys going to catch yourselves if you just make it a referendum on and issue, right?
Because the engagement was more thematic and conceptual. I mean, and it was, it wasn't up and down both on particular items. And so if you were going to do it and you wanted it that way, you'd really need to think through, that opens up a can of worms. If that was the design that you decided, yeah, we want some up and down things as community engagement. This, you saw the engagement we had tonight. I mean, that you're going to this, you're going to need a bigger room, you know, on that. So I think that the engagement we had, why it was smart is that it was more conceptual and thematic. So it helped you identify some things to then work as teams to say, okay, what would that look like given our restraints and.
The last thing you want is a group here lined up to advocate for athletic field houses versus the group lined up here to advocate for Fine Arts, right? I mean, we don't want to create any scenario where we get that. Yeah, and we don't want to build it that way, so it's not presented that way, right? Because because they all deserve to have the things they need to be successful, right? I mean, and we want to give them plans to respond to in that way.
All of them address different needs for different students and send them on different paths. I mean, might not have been an athletic student, but for some of our athletic students, that's their way of dealing with other issues and looking forward to the next step. And for our Fine Arts kids, that's the way for them to say things. I mean, so we definitely don't want us to get those together. We want to try to.
One quick thing, I know, the last community engagement that we had was done during COVID. Community wide, three things came out of it. One was career tech pathways. One was middle schools. And the third, what was the third? I had some mind in your loss. It came out of those community, but we did those three things in this plan based on that community engagement that happened during COVID.
Well, no one wants to talk about it, but it was the Center for Innovation, the multi-use educational facility, right, that we talked about. And so that was based on that feedback, too, about accomplishing portrait of the graduate competency. So all of those decisions were riddled in that feedback process. But our our product, it's like I said, tonight, it's dynamic. Things change, right? We need to reevaluate. It's just, we want to design, you know, a strategy around that, right? And so I think that's the takeaway.
Well, October 8th, we'll come back to the discussion and figure out how to put it on the agenda.
Yep.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor?